So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the East Fischko zoning board. Of appeals meeting of two twenty-two twenty-two. I had to say that at least once today. So, um, hold on. Um, due to the public health and safety concerns associated with COVID nineteen, the pandemic, the board is meeting via video conference using the Zoom platform. In accordance with the governor's executive orders, uh, there is no in-person public participation tonight, rather the public can watch. The live meeting through Zoom online and on cable. Uh, notice of tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the town website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting. And participate in any public hearings for each of the public hearing applications. On the agenda this evening, public comments will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any of their own questions. Um, please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and a transcript will be available at a later date. Uh, we start our meeting tonight with some administrative issues, then there are some, uh, then there will be several public hearings. And then after that, there will be a couple of reviews, which is generally the first time that those board is seeing those applications. So for the public hearings, um, those are ones where the neighbors were noticed of their ability to participate in tonight's meeting. Uh, we, we do want to recognize that you know these areas better than we do. I will introduce each agenda item to everyone. Um, so that you'll know which item we're working on. Finally, when we get to the reviews. Uh, those will not have public comment this evening, but we will get to the public comment as soon as, uh, you know, at the appropriate time. And the neighbors will be noticed at that time. So if you wish to comment on an application that has a public hearing, when we get to that item on the agenda. And I ask for public comment, please do the following depending on upon whether you are on the phone or online. Members of the public attending online via the Zoom app may use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time. If you would like to make a comment, the feature is located on the bottom of your screen. Uh, those attending via telephone can press star nine. The meeting host will see that your hand is raised or that you have pressed our nine and will unmute. Uh, those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon to speak. It's also helpful if you give us your address. Um, some just basic ground rules in order to keep the meeting orderly and ensure we get a clear recording, please follow the ground rules. When you are given access to sleep, to speak, please state your name and address. It is helpful for the board members to know if you are a neighbor to an applicant. Board members, I'll call upon you one at a time to speak, uh, to avoid everyone speaking at once. Or if I call for, um, call for something and you want to just raise your hand on the screen, I'll, I'll be able to see you on the screen and we'll be able to call you at that point. Um, also board members, I'm going to ask you each to meet yourselves when you're not speaking. Uh, it's especially important if you have a clock or any other apparatus or animals at your house, just to keep the recording clean. Um, we'll, we'll use the roll call voting as we usually do, uh, for the purpose of any board motions. Uh, and just thank you in advance for everybody's cooperation with that. So. All right. So according to our agenda, first thing we have to do is, uh, pledge of allegiance. So can I ask everyone to stand? And say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which it stands, one nation, one nation, God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So as of right now, the governor's executive order takes us through, I believe it's March sixteenth for a virtual meeting. So that would right now not allow us to meet virtually in March. Um, but assuming the executive order does get extended, because I don't believe this pandemic is over yet. Um, is it the pleasure of the board to continue to meet via Zoom? I, I think at this point it just makes sense because weather-wise it just. You know, keeps our ability to just keep the meetings going. And then even you can guys can attend from wherever you are as opposed to needing to get to town hall. So, uh.
I agree, I agree. So, uh, unless the governor says that we have to meet in person. If you have the option of Zoom, then I would prefer that we do it by Zoom. This way we can be in our own, um, comfortable environment, environment. Wherever we are and we can kind of conduct business.
Just to make it easier, I'm fine with it. I mean, the COVID, I'm not concerned with, but this, this for ease of this makes sense.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, I have no issue with.
Okay. All right. So, um, our next two meeting dates are going to be Tuesday, March twenty-second and Tuesday, March, oh, sorry, April twenty-sixth. Uh, and we do have one set of minutes to approve. There were just a handful of amendments to those minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the men in the minutes from our January meeting?
As amended, as amended.
So Rocco, you want to second that?
Second.
On favor? Your hand up. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to call, we do a two public hearings. What I'll do is I'll call each one, we'll do, hear them each separately. Um, and then we'll, you know, I'll give a quick summary of what I remember of this application. And then, um, after the board has asked their questions, we will ask if there are any questions from members of the public regarding any of these applications. And the interesting thing is our two public hearings this afternoon are actually relatively close neighbors to each other. So. Um, so let's get right to it. Item number one is appeal four zero two-three Mohammed Rahman. Mohammed Rahman eighty-one Broadway Hopewell Junction is requesting a nine-foot sideline variance to allow an existing twelve-foot by twenty-foot or two hundred and forty square foot. Rear deck pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, so Mr. Rahman, we, we did have an opportunity to chat with you last month about your application. You actually just bought this house. If I remember correctly, you just bought it.
Yeah, about two and a half months here, please.
Yeah. And so I believe you're looking to replace the deck in the back or something. I don't know. It, uh, it wasn't. But it's, it's, it's not something that you built. You built, you bought the house with the deck in the place that it's in. Um, you said the building inspector had come out and give you, given you some direction of, you know, what to do. It's the deck is not visible to anybody, to not to your neighbors, not from the road. So. Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Mr. Rahman, is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no, that's all.
Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the application from Mohammed Rahman eighty-one Broadway Hopewell Junction? Requesting a nine-foot sideline variance to allow an existing twelve-foot by twenty-foot rear deck.
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
Thank you, Michael. The only other thing I should add is this isn't in the Loma La community. So, um, because some people wonder where Broadway is. But it's in that.
And if I see any. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Michael.
Oh, I just don't see any hands that are raised.
Okay. If I remember correctly, yours, yours, the property that backs up onto the other land that's owned by the neighborhood is by the, the HOA. Mr. Rahman?
Yes.
Okay. So again, likely that it's not going to be that this deck is not impactful to any neighbor.
No.
Okay. So seeing that there's no public comment, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Somebody want to offer the resolution?
This is an appeal number forty twenty-three. Applicant is Mohammed Rahman requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for the. From the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for twelve feet by twenty feet, two hundred and forty square foot rear deck. The property is located at eighty-one Broadway Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hanson, whereas the applicant purchased the house recently. And the existing deck was built prior to the applicant's purchase. And whereas the property is narrow and long, and whereas there are existing non-conforming access accessory structures. Structures located on the property, which will require, which will not require variances, but would be, but would not be permitted to be rebuilt. As of right where they are constructed and whereas this is a type-two action under seeker. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce. An undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The result, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical. Or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Mohammed Rahman. For a nine-foot sideline variance from the requirement of the schedule of bulk regulations. For a twelve-foot by twenty-foot, two hundred and forty square foot rear deck. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution. The chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk. And a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, I. So Mr. Rahman, your motion carries. Um, now you'll just deal with the building department.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right.
Thank you guys. Take care.
Yeah, okay. So item number two, appeal four zero two-four Cindy and Ahmed. Ike, Ike her elder, I, I, I actually, I need to know if it's, that's an L or an E I Cindy, if you could answer that.
Elder, yes.
Okay, because the minutes had it as E I, just so we all know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make one further amendment to the minutes. But not, it's not significant for the, for the minutes. Okay. So there's an appeal for. Cindy and Ahmed Elgar, one twenty-two Broadway Hopewell Junction requesting a thirty-two-foot rear line variance. To allow a proposed twenty-foot by thirty-foot, six hundred square foot addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So Cindy, you are, you, you, we had an opportunity to review this with you last month while you were sitting in your car.
Yes, cold. We had no heat.
We appreciate the measures that you went to to keep our meeting on track there. So that was fine, no problem. Um, and so what we talked about was the fact that you have any, a three-bedroom house now. And with this addition, you will continue to have a three-bedroom house because you're not, you're not doing anything to your septic. You're not adding any bathrooms or any bedrooms.
That's correct.
Um, I, I think it's a one-story addition or a one and a half story addition. So it's, there's not really a full second floor to this addition.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing that we talked about was the fact that there's a garage in your front yard.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. We purchased a property with, uh, that structure already existing.
Yeah. And so Jackie, I'm actually just seeing that we actually never posted for that garage in the front yard. But.
That's okay. The public hearing was noticed in general.
Yeah.
So I, I think we'll be able to get by on this one.
Okay. And it is, it's an existing structure. So it's, she's not changing it, moving it, and she's not doing anything to it. So. All right. So that, so the finish of the addition is going to be similar to what is there for your existing house, right?
Correct.
Okay, um. I mean, it puts its eighteen and a half feet from the rear property line. Uh, is your property also surrounded by?
It, it was a community property.
That's what I thought. Okay. Yeah. Cause the way that there's a lot of, I mean, the denseness of the vegetation over there was pretty amazing. So.
Yeah.
Um, so the likelihood of this being visible to anybody is very, very limited. So. Questions from or comments from board members?
I'm good.
None by me.
I'm good. No comments.
Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Cindy and Ahmed Elgar? One twenty-two Broadway Hopewell Junction requesting a thirty-two-foot rear line variance to allow a proposed twenty-foot by thirty-foot. Or six hundred square foot addition.
I don't see any hands that are raised.
Okay. So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rocco?
Sure. This is appeal number four zero two-four Cindy and Cindy and Ahmed Elgar. The request for a thirty-six-foot rear line variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations of the town code. And for a variance from the requirements of section one nine four dash one oh seven C of the town code for detached garage. The location is at one twenty-two Broadway in Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Lamontone. Whereas the applicant's house is located very close to the real lot line. And whereas the house and the proposed extension are screened from all neighboring properties by dense tree cover. And whereas the proposed extension is the only workable location due to the sitting of the house. And whereas the proposed extension will not increase the number of bedrooms or bathrooms. And whereas there is also a detached garage, which is located in front of the front line of the house. And whereas the detached garage existed prior to the applicant's purchase of the property. And whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News of February sixteen, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. As the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The real line variance is substantial, but will be screened from other neighbors by the existing tree cover. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Cindy and Ahmed Elger. For a thirty-six-foot real line variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations of the town code. And for a variance from the requirements of section one nine four dash one oh seven C of the town code. For an existing detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution. The chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk. And a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, I. So Cindy, your motion carries. You're all set. Now you just deal with the building department.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Good evening.
All right. So for, um, the, for purposes of the meeting this evening, our public hearings are over. There are no additional public hearings this evening. So there will be no additional public comment on any applications this evening. Um, now we're going to get to reviews, which are all new applications that came in in the last month and, and applications that this board has not seen yet. So what we'll do is work through any questions that we may have regarding these applications. And then at the appropriate time, set them up for public comment where we can hear from your neighbors. So item number three is appeal four zero two-five Anthony Ferrante. Anthony Ferrante sixty-one Rainbow Crest Hopewell Junction is requesting a thirty-three-foot rear line variance to allow a proposed twenty-foot by sixteen-foot. Or three hundred and twenty square foot addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So. Well, Brian, you're here with him.
Hey guys, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Good.
How are you guys doing?
We're good. Um, but can you take us through this? Cause on my plans, I'm seeing two additions.
Right. There's two additions. So there's, um, the one that we're seeking the variance for is on, let's say, the, uh, northwestern side. Um, of the, of the structure. Um, that's where they'd like to increase their, their living space on the corner of the house. There's a couple of restrictions. We have some septic components in the front of the house. And the applicant was just looking to expand their, their living room area in that section. Um, and then toward the rear of the house, more of an office area, um, in the back of the house. Um, I think it's a, I think if I recall, looking at the plan, it's like a twelve-by-fourteen addition, um, off the back. Side of the house. Um, and I, I meant to forge you a plan. I know Jackie asked for some additional information. I think the offset from that rear elevation. Um, to, um, the, the cul-de-sac area, I ran a number on that before the meeting, fifty point two feet.
Yeah, it was awfully close.
I tell you, you could slip a piece of paper in there, but we do make it.
All right. Well, again, our, our plans don't show any measurement there, but that's, it was clear the way the property line goes around the cul-de-sac. That that new corner will be closer than the existing corner of the house.
Yes, yes, we do make it. Um, and in our subsequent, um, you know, we can follow this up with an updated plan that shows that offset. And that we don't need the variance in that location.
Okay. So there's not going to be any shifting of this as construction happens or anything like that. Understand that there's, you've literally got inches to deal with over there.
Issues to deal with. We don't want to come back and bother you.
Okay. All right. So tell us, what is the use of this addition, of these additions of this living space?
Um, just that there's, um, the family would like to just expand their, their living area. Uh, currently, um, the, 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 the parents live there and the daughter lives there with family. So just a little bit bigger, um, area for family to maneuver. With COVID and everything going on. Um, the, the ability to find a house that's set up, um, in this configuration is fairly limited. Um, so they would like to just, you know, invest into the existing dwelling just to expand their livable footprint.
So are they adding a bedroom or a bathroom?
Uh, no, no bedroom addition, um, on this application.
So where is there septic that I see fields in the front? So.
Fields in the front, yes.
It's, but it's labeled approved septic area, not, you know, so.
Yes, I, the, the, the septic area, like, like, let's say the septic box closer to the house is where the system currently sits. And then you have the expansion area just past that.
Okay. All right. So you actually have two front yards here because you've got Sunshine Lane and Rainbow Crest.
Yes.
You don't, you don't give me a measurement from Sunshine Lane, but it's clear that it's way past the fifty feet. So I'm not too worried about that. All right. Comments or questions from board members?
Um, I was looking at the map and, uh, yes, uh, the applicant barely makes it. From the cul-de-sac, but because the application is in front of us, maybe the applicant may want to get a one-foot variance. For the section that is, uh, fourteen feet by twelve feet or so. So in case during construction, it moves by four, six inches, eight inches, things sometimes, you know, they're not precisely aligned. And so somebody down the road could, uh, you know, have a situation where it is forty-nine feet, six inches. And then in some issues, uh, may arise. So.
Sorry, but Aziz, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be giving out variances that are not needed. We, we, we kind of worked through that issue and, you know, it's, that's why we wanted, we were asking the question of, you know, are they? Sure that nothing's going to shift during constructions, because.
No, the reason is because when you look at the dark black line, it is to, in my mind, I mean, I, I, maybe it's once it's enlarged. It'll give me inches, but again, as long as we are aware that the applicant. Knows for a fact that they're going to keep it within the buildable envelope. So that, you know, because we have discussed this issue, they're aware of it, so that they don't come back.
Well, Brian, you said.
Many years from down the road.
You said it was fifty point two feet, right?
Right, right. That's, that's, that's the measurement we've come up with off of our analysis.
All right, Brian, what's on, what's on, what's on the other side of the addition, the larger addition that you want? What's on the other side of that property line? Is that, there's a, is there a house there? Where is the house on that other lot?
Um, if you're looking, it's, it's almost in line, um, with the, uh, with the existing houses. All those houses, when they were built, um, were fronting towards Sunshine Lane. Um, and this, this cul-de-sac was meant to expand, extend into like the Morgenthau property, um, and beyond.
Okay.
So this, uh, the, the house is, let's say, going up Sunshine Lane toward the west. They're, they're all in line with, with this house facing sunshine.
So it, but how close is that, is the house next door to the property line? Again, this addition, is it visible to the house next door?
Um, I believe there is some screening in between the, the two residences. The applicant actually may be on the call right now if they want to chime in. Um, but I'm going to say, uh, from being out there, you're probably, I, I, I think from memory, you're probably thirty, thirty-five feet. From the property line.
To the neighbor's house.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Ferrante, I see you raised your hand. So if. Um, Michael, can you unmute him? Okay, there you go.
Am I on? Okay. Hi, I'm his daughter Laura.
Oh, hi.
I, so there are definitely trees between us and the neighbors. Um, I'm not sure, uh, how far the distance, um, it would be, but there's definitely some big trees between us.
But it's like, sometimes when you get onto this property, usually there's like driveway and then it's the garage side of the house or something like that. So again, then, then it's less impactful if it's a, if it's a driveway and then the garage as opposed to being, you know, looking in somebody's window. That's what I'm wondering.
Um, well, she, she does not have any windows on the side. So it's the side of her house, but there's no windows.
Okay. Has, and has anybody had any conversation with the neighbor? Is the neighbor aware of this?
Uh, did you guys?
Not yet.
No.
No, not yet.
Okay. Yeah. We encourage you to talk with your neighbors just so that you're not caught by surprise, you know, at the public hearing. Cause they will get noticed of this. So.
Um, okay.
Uh, is this one story, two story? How, what's the addition?
Uh, the addition is going to be, uh, one story off to the side of the house, right? And, and Norma, just to give you perspective, um, there's a, there's a significant tree line in between the two residences. I'm going to, I'm going to hold to about my thirty-five foot comment of, of the existing house to the west off of the property line.
Okay.
And the driveway is on, uh, the opposite side, um, of the dwelling. So it wouldn't be directly next to, uh, this addition. It would be on the other side of the house.
Okay, that's fine. This, it's just helpful to know that. All right. Comments? Any other comments or questions from board members?
No, I'm good.
I have no, pretty familiar, little bit familiar with the property, so.
Okay. Aziz, motion for.
Motion to redress?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Brian, you'll talk to Jackie at some point to get signs for the property. You have two front yards. You're going to need two signs.
Okay, we'll do.
All right. Thank you, folks. We'll see you next month.
We'll see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. All right. One more down. So item number four. Appeal number four zero two-six Jeffrey Argo, Argo. Um, three breast drive Hopewell Junction requesting a twenty-one-foot sideline variance to allow a proposed twenty-five-foot by thirty-foot. Or seven hundred and fifty square foot detached garage pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So again, Mr. Argo, this is the first time we're seeing your application. If you could take us through it. Oh, and Brian's back again. Go ahead, Brian.
Two in a row. You guys can get rid of me. Um, yeah, applicant seeking detached garage, uh, twenty-five feet wide, thirty foot deep. Um, the way you can see from the survey, um, the way that the house is kind of configured in the driveway in. It's a side load, uh, garage to the existing house, um, and the positioning of the house in relation. To, uh, the, the available area to actually, you know, install a garage, uh, basically puts it right in line. Um, with, with the, with the side of the house, with a, with a front entry or access from the existing driveway. So that kind of shakes out to about a, a, a four-foot separation between the property line and the proposed detached structure.
So Brian, I have to ask if, if reducing the, or if, if a twenty-one foot from twenty-five feet. So more of an eighty percent variance is not substantial. What in your mind is a substantial variance?
Well, if, if it was one foot off, that'd be substantial. That's a tough one.
Good try, but.
I tried, you know.
Think this is pretty substantial.
It's, 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 um, it's, it's tight to the line.
How tall is the garage?
So I think we're, if, if you look at, I think we submitted a set of, uh, renderings there. So.
I, I, I don't have it. So all I have is the, is your plan.
So it's like, it's, it's. So it's like a, it's it's like a story and a half, so it'll, it you're looking at from finished grade to top of ridge, you're twenty-four feet.
So there's a second story to it?
Yeah, storage up up inside, um. You know, typically what people, if you're building a detached garage, people typically like to have some storage above, so.
Is there a full set of stairs or pull downstairs to get up to it?
Little be, um, the intention is to have a set of stairs going up there.
Is there going to be electric and water in this garage?
There will be electric in there, um, so far conversations with the advocate haven't led to water, the intention is not to have an apartment in there.
All right, we need to be very clear that living space is not allowed in in a detached garage.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so why can't this go closer to the house? Uh, well, I'm, I'm really, this is substantial, this is, this is a huge variance, unless you've talked to your neighbors already and. They have no objection, but I I'm.
There's, there is a, an existing uh walkway that traverses from the the side load uh garage of the existing house around back. Um, to the deck area. So we tried to maintain um that that walkway in place and then placed our detached garage off of that. Um, if there is flexibility to move the garage, we'd have to um look at altering that walkway, which. If it makes the board more comfortable, I'm sure we can accommodate. Some um realignment of that walkway.
How, what's the distance between the house and the proposed corner of the garage?
Uh, let me see here if I have it on the plan. We're probably about eight feet off of the garage to the current location of the detached garage.
And how wide is the walkway?
I believe it's around three and a half, four feet, from my recollection.
I mean, I understand needing some distance, you need to get a mower in between or, you know, something into the backyard, you don't need to walk around the structure. So I understand some distance. Um. I get the twenty-five feet wide because, you know, although you probably could make a garage twenty-four feet wide and still get your two bays in there.
Or bumping it back three, four feet, and then you can bump it over three, four feet and keep the walkway the same.
Definitely could do that, that is a, that is a possibility. We do realize it is a, the position of the of the existing driveway in the house does make it tight to the line. So um, we do have that flexibility to kind of move it back and over. Um, and you can still have access to the front of the garage.
So tell me about any conversations with the neighbors?
I don't know if the applicant's on the line right now, uh, I personally haven't had uh conversations with the uh with the neighbors, I know we do encourage that.
The applicant is is online and he's been unmuted.
Oh. Um, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I I spoke to my neighbors about it, no one seems to uh have any objection, although, you know, it's, it's conceptual. At this point, so I don't know what they, you know, what they would think, but I, everyone seems to be very uh friendly about it. And um, I don't suppose uh it's going to be an issue.
Okay.
And I spoke directly to the, I mean, one of my um. Bigger conversation with the neighbor directly impacted by the, by where the garage be, and she seemed very fine with it.
Okay, so where is her house next door?
Um, like, uh, next, our garages, our driveways run parallel.
Okay, so so her driveway is on that side of the house?
Yes.
Backdoor side.
Yeah, and they they're almost, it's almost like a mirror image. Um, so the houses are in line too with both, you know, opposing side load garages.
Is there any trees or any screening in between, or are you proposing any?
Uh, there is existing vegetation between, um, so you have some older canopy. Um, trees in between along the property line, and then there is some, some shrubbery um on each side. Um, of the driveways that creates like a low vegetative.
Yeah, but if you're reducing your side down to four feet, you can't, you're not going to be able to sustain anything on your side.
No, you're, you're hundred percent right.
You're going to, you, if if nothing else during construction, you're going to just disturb any of the roots there, so. So or is the applicant proposing any screening to go back or a fence or anything to go back on that side after the construction's done?
Um, as of the conversation with the applicant didn't lead to that, but um I think if we. Take the suggestion of moving the garage slightly back and over toward um the house. We could probably add another four foot and still have um access, unopposed access to the front of the garage. So that would probably give you eight feet um in between the property line and the garage. And um it would further protect the the existing tree roots with the mature trees and.
Would actually give you more privacy for the pool, too.
Yeah.
All right, so if you did that, are we now reducing the variance to eight feet? Brian, what do you, what's your thinking?
Yeah, I think we could do that, I think that's the doable option, I think that would um. That would, it would provide a little bit more of a buffer between the applicants uh property. Um, it would provide a little bit more constructability. Um, you know, for installing, you know, framing and and um inciting on on the side of the property. So.
For seventeen foot sideline variance.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
I think that makes it a better application, honestly, that's my personal opinion, but.
Gives it a different look.
It was my suggestion, so I should agree with that.
Well, seeing a two-story addition go up is is pretty significant, especially now a neighbor is going to see a thirty-foot wall. You know, on on our, on that side of their property, so. Um, you know, they they may not realize how, what that's going to look like, so.
But does the neighbor, did I hear right, the neighbor's has a garage in that exact scene spot on their side, because he said it was a mirror image.
Yeah.
The house is a mirror image.
Yeah, the house is a marriage, they don't have a detached garage, but the house.
So so you, so you're right, they would be staring at that wall.
Yeah.
The side of the, side of a barn, so to speak. Um, are there any uh obstructions that would prevent you from moving it? Um, as suggested earlier, uh, by four feet further back and inside, uh, like rocks or something like that. So then, um, that, you know, because I, once we advertise, I mean, we don't want you to come back um and then let us know. Or maybe i- in a week, ten days, you know, before we can make a motion. Uh, with a, for a seventeen-foot variance, so that you're bringing your uh your garage, detached garage. Eight feet, eight feet in uh from the neighbor's property or from your property. But then, uh, if you see any changes, may maybe you'll have to come back and ask for a different variance. Um, like, I don't know how you would like us to proceed.
I I, I mean, the applicant's on the phone, obviously, it's ultimately, it's his, his call, but from a constructability standpoint, I don't see based upon. Um, being on site, there being any, any um. Uh, anything that would prevent that slight shift, um, so I mean, I defer the applicant, applicant's on the line.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's no physical um barrier that would prevent the. You know, the shifting of the uh garage, only thing I would say is that, as you know, the further back it moves, that just increases. Um, let's say, cost of driveway and things like that, but. Yeah, that's a. Um, it is, it is, it is a feasible to to put it, you know, further, further away.
Though it appears your driveway right now is, well, it's it's eighty feet to the corner of the house, so your driveway is, yeah, that's, that's, that's actually pretty close, so. All right, um, so my, my suggestion would be to go back with what we're talking about, moving it back a little bit and moving it over. So it just, not that, it's not going to get tucked behind the house, but it just makes it a little bit less visible. And a little less impactful to your neighbor, because four, to have a twenty-four-foot structure, just four feet away from the property line is, that's a lot.
Yeah, we want to be obviously cognizant of the neighbors, um, so um, we could, we could make that adjustment.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to advertise how for a seventeen-foot sideline variance. For the proposed uh twenty-five, was it twenty-five feet or twenty-four feet by thirty feet, Norma?
Well, they're, they're suggesting twenty-five.
Okay, so, so basically, uh, seventeen-foot sideline variance for a twenty-five by thirty. For detached garage.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, um, Brian, talk to Jackie this week about signs, please.
Sounds great, I will, thank you.
All right, then we'll see you next month.
Thanks, guys.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Item number, let me just make my notes here. Item number five, appeal four zero two seven, Daniel Cabibbo, one ninety-one Creekside Road, Hopple Junction. Requesting a nine-foot sideline variance to allow a proposed five hundred and ten square foot garage and a twenty-seven. Foot rear line variance to allow our proposed nine hundred and fifty square foot addition pursuant to a schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So, Mr. Cabibbo, you're on the line.
Hi, are you?
Again, good, first time we're seeing your application. Um. So, if you don't mind taking us through your, so you're proposing two additions.
Um, it's, it's going to be one, it's two additions can connected together, it's it's one structure, basically.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's a garage, but the garage is connected to, I think you, I think we're called, it was called accessory unit, does that make sense?
Oh, an accessory dwelling unit?
Accessory, I have accessory unit.
So you're adding a, you're adding a bedroom?
I'm adding one bedroom and I'm, I'm taking one bedroom away from the existing home.
And what's the bedroom from the existing home going to become instead?
That's going to become a den or an office.
How many bathrooms are you adding?
Uh, one and a half. One and a half.
How many people are living in your home now?
There's one, it's just me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Because what worries me is you have a septic and you say you, you will have no need for that extra bedroom that you say you're going to give up. But the person that you know your house to next may say, oh, this could be a bedroom. And then suddenly your septic can't handle the fact that there might be eight people living in a three-bedroom house instead of six people living in this, you know what I'm saying? So we have to be really careful about the fact that you're adding a bedroom, but and and a bathroom and a half. But you're not doing anything to your septic.
Right, I mean, I can't plan necessarily for. I I mean, you make a good point, I just, I can't plan for that, I mean, I could tell you that part of the reason why. And this is a one floor, one-story addition, I mean, part of the reason why I have to do this is because. So this is meant for my parents to live. Um, the one-story helps because they're older, easier for them to get around. And then, you know, initially, we thought we could build on the other side of the house, the home, but there's, there's a septic system there. Um, and so that was not ideal. Um, but, I mean, I totally intend on removing the one bedroom. I don't, I'm one person, I don't need uh four, I don't need four bedrooms, it's nice to have a big house. But as it stands now, the intention is to have a total of three people and two sort of separate dwellings here.
Do you, do you plan on doing something to that one bedroom or removing, so that if. To change it, you say you get rid of it, what do you?
Well, I mean, it would be nice to have like a workout room with some workout equipment, um, things like that, TV.
I understand, but are you planning on removing a wall or something?
N- no, no walls, just.
I'm just trying to.
He's not going to, probably, he's not probably not going to reach, move, remove the closet or anything, so it's, that's why I'm saying the room is still going to be there.
I can do that, I mean, I could, I could remove the closet, I I don't have a problem with that. Um, if that's something I have to do, then I'll remove the closet.
Well, one of the things they look at to make a, a room a bedroom is whether or not it has a closet.
Right.
Um. So that's what I just wondered, when you said you're going to remove it as a bedroom. You just changed the name of it, doesn't mean it's not a bedroom when somebody else buys the house. That's what I was just asking, whether you're going to do something.
I'm not. Right. I get it, I mean, at the end of the day, somebody else could buy the house and put, and this is true for anybody's house, right? They can just decide to put another wall up and and turn it into a, into a bedroom. Um. But, I mean, my, my intention is to convert it into something that I could use. That works for me, which would be a workout room, preferably.
Okay, so how close are you to your neighbor to the right of your house?
Um, so we're pretty far apart, uh, physically, there's a, there's a lot of woods in between us. So you can't see them and they can't see me. And the, it's pretty mature, too, it, the, the community here is probably about fifteen years old. So the, the trees, I mean, it's a pretty thick brush, and the trees are pretty tall.
So the finish on your, the house that you're proposing is going to be matching?
It has to, yes, absolutely. And there's some other improvements that I have to meet to related to landscaping, walkways, potentially putting a new roof on the house. The house is about fifteen years old and was not well-maintained prior to when I purchased it.
I guess I'm, I I'm stuck on why is the, why is you proposing the addition to be as large as it is?
Um, it's nine hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah.
Is that lot, I I don't, is that considered large? I'm sorry, I don't.
Well, i- it is because you need the variance, so if you don't need to go back that far. Or over to your neighbor so far, we reduce the variance.
Um, so I need the nine hundred and fifty square feet so that my parents can live in that space.
Okay, please understand, an accessory dwelling unit's requirement is that you have to have six hundred square feet.
Okay, so then that's part of, so then that's part of the variance, is that what you're saying? This is an education for me, so.
No, not necessarily, I, just a typical one-bedroom apartment.
Oh, okay.
In the range of six hundred, six hundred and fifty square feet is perfectly normal. Nine hundred and fifty square feet, that's actually a pretty large two-bedroom apartment usually, so that's why I'm. Because again, you're, unless I'm, unless the den that you're proposing here is part of the existing house, it looks like you're adding a bedroom and a den.
Oh, no, no, yes, it's a bedroom and a den, yes, that's right, right, that's a flexible there, speed there.
Could create another bedroom down the road for somebody, that's what I'm worried about.
It would have been helpful if we had a floor plan from what you're looking.
There is a floor, uh, well, there's a floor plan that, of what I guess he's proposing.
Yeah, there should be a floor plan there.
But not of the existing house, so so in essence, you really could be going from three bedrooms to five bedrooms. That's what's worrying me.
I I'm, I'm going, um, it's a net, for me, it's a net four bedrooms. And that's how I plan to use it.
But you just, you said you're going to be removing one bedroom in your house.
That's right, so I'll have three bedrooms in the existing house and then one bedroom that would be added, so that's four bedrooms.
What's the size of the septic that's there?
I don't know the answer to that question.
When was the house built, you remember?
Uh, it was built in two thousand and five. Uh, it was built in two thousand and five.
So it could be a fifteen, um, hundred gallon as a, or twelve fifty, instead of a thousand gallon maybe, because I think, um. Uh, like fifteen years ago, they switched from thousand to twelve fifty and higher, so, but again, somebody has to verify that.
I'll check on that tomorrow about the subject. There's a, in the back, that's labeled W slash C, which usually means water closet, but I'm not sure.
Oh, that's supposed to be a walk-in closet, sorry, it's supposed to be closet.
Okay, again, that's a really large, yeah.
Um, my package only had the. The, uh, the, the map, but not a detailed plan of the, of the existing or the proposed addition.
So attached to the survey online is a floor plan.
Okay, I, I.
Mine either.
You didn't get that? Jackie, it sounds like not everybody got the floor plan.
Uh, Jackie, you're muted.
You guys didn't receive that, this big page on the back?
Yeah.
No.
You did, no?
Didn't get the floor plan.
Sounds like they got the survey, Jackie, but not the floor plan attached to it.
This is all I got.
All right, I'll have to send that over to you. This is all I have.
Miss, Mr. Cabibbo, who's the architect that you're working with?
I'm not working with the architect yet.
Oh, so who, who drew this floor plan then?
Oh, we did, my, I did. My dad and I drew it. I'll take that as a compliment, Nora, thank you. Appreciate it, I was about to let him know, I don't wanna get, get him too.
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's very well done, I, I agree with that, but there are certain things that are missing, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, 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 it's not professionally done, so.
And so that's what, so you, like, I'm seeing sets of stairs, but I'm not sure exactly what they're connecting to, and there's.
So, this, there are stairs in the garage that take you downstairs into a basement. Um, and so that's what you're looking at in the garage.
Okay, so is this garage part of the addition?
There, yeah, it's all together, yeah, the garage is together, uh-huh.
Oh, okay, that helps, that's probably where you're getting such large square footage from then.
Yeah, to be honest, eh, to be honest with you, I, I mean, I didn't draw this, and so I don't have all of the. The detail, but the garage itself is, um, I mean, it's a pretty large garage, it's gonna be, it's very deep, because we wanted to also use it for storage, one of the things I don't wanna do. Is have the car sitting out in the garage, so I want the car inside the garage, um, and then I'd like to store some stuff in the back.
Okay, so it, so it appears that the garage is thirty feet deep. Which is a little bit bigger than a standard garage, but.
Right.
Um, and it's got a, looks like a nine-foot door.
Yep.
Um. So it looks like the garage itself is probably a little bit more than twelve feet, because you, the doorway is one measurement, but the actual wall. Where the stairs are appears to be just a little bit bigger, so.
Yeah, it's roughly twelve, it's just a little over twelve.
Got, so guys, part of that nine hundred and fifty square feet is a garage, that ma, to, to be honest, that makes a lot more sense now. Okay, and then you're proposing a patio behind it.
Yep.
Behind the garage and cattucco-ned with the house, with the addition, where it looks like you'd have to be in the den to walk out onto this patio.
Um, well, yes, but I don't think we put a door, oh, no, we did put a door there, yeah, so you could walk in and out and through the den or through the patio, I can't tell if he put a door there or not, to be honest with you.
Is there. Doorway between the addition and the main house?
Yeah.
Again, I don't have the benefit of what, uh, Norma, you're looking at.
Yeah, you guys are good, you need to see this.
The, uh, the applicant's request, uh, the applicant is requesting a five hundred and ten square foot garage. Plus a proposed nine hundred and fifty square foot addition, so that makes it nine fifty plus five ten goes pretty substantial. So, um, so maybe, uh, it comes to almost like fourteen sixty square foot, fourteen, one thousand four and sixty square foot.
I think your measure, your math might be off, I think the nine fifty includes the garage, Aziz. But I, I agree, you don't have the benefit of this plan that, that I'm looking at, so, um.
Because this is allow, allow a proposed five hundred and ten foot garage and. A variance for the proposed nine foot addition and.
The verbiage would suggest that, I, I understand what Aziz is saying.
All right, so Mr. Cabibbo, clarify that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Is, is the nine hundred and fifty square feet, does that include the garage?
Um, let me fi, let me find out, because I'm just trying to do the math, cause the, the addition itself is. Yeah, the to, the whole thing is nine hundred and fifty square feet, yes, can, I just confirmed it, nine hundred and fifty square feet is the whole entire thing.
But then somewhere, it's, eh, on your application, it says something, a nine-foot side for a garage, and then it says five hundred and ten square feet. The garage is not five hundred and ten square feet, if I do twelve by thirty, it's three hundred and sixty square feet, again, I'm granted, it's gonna be a little bit more bigger than that.
Yeah, it might, let me, let me confirm it, let me confirm it for you, because. Um, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I'm just doing the math on the back of the envelope here, and. It looks, it looks like, it looks like it's nine hundred and fifty square feet plus. Another five-ten for the garage, but, um. But I don't know where that five-ten is coming from, because I'm not getting five-ten, I'm getting three-sixty for the garage, so.
That's where I'm at too, but, but again, if you include the area for the stairs as part of the garage, that's probably where you get it.
Where you get the five-ten, okay.
Yeah, because that looks like it's gonna be a four-foot wide, well, no.
I think it's included.
I, I look at the measurements on the survey, they don't seem to make sense to me, they, they seem to be conflicting, I'm not sure what the measurements.
Well, that's the other thing, that's. The garage is seventeen by thirty, um. Yeah, we're looking at a fourteen-seven and a fifteen-and-a-half foot from the neighbor to the right.
Yeah.
And what we have here on this document is, um, requesting a nine foot, is that right, nine foot sideline variance?
Yeah, but I'm just looking at your measurements for the addition, you indicate there's a thirty-foot length. On one, then you have towards the front of the house, you have twenty feet, five inches, and then also on that line, you have six feet. So, if I'm trying to figure out your square footage based on the. Map, and in the back line, you have twenty-seven feet and fourteen, I mean, those square footages are not adding up, I don't think, to what you're saying.
Yeah, the garage, the garage.
Maybe who've you, before you get into this even more is. To have a professional take a look at it, make sure you can do what you want for your septic system. And for this addition in terms of your bedrooms and stuff, and what load you're gonna put on that. And to finalize it more what you want.
Yeah, I, I, I know, again, from my perspective, I don't have all the information, so I would suggest that we, uh, continue this, uh. Uh, review and have the applicant consult with a professional and update us with a news, uh, whatever the applicant is proposing, along with the floor plan. Along with what, um, variances the applicant is looking for, because right now it's all confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's, there's not enough direct information here to make any coherent decision.
And yeah, it may, I know some terms like accessory uses, I mean, you're not really asking for an accessory use for your. Parents to live there, you're really looking for an addition on your house, because I think it was an accessory use, you know, a temporary accessory use for your parents, that would be a whole different. Game and what you would have to do in terms of moving the structure afterwards, so I think you need to speak to somebody.
Not necessarily, Jim, accessory dwelling units are allowed, but that technically, you, I'm not sure you wanna do that, because then it's an income-producing. Unit that gets added to your, your taxes would go up.
So my taxes go up if I.
Yeah, I'm not sure you wanna do that, so, if, if it's, if you're just talking about doing an addition like Jim said for your parents, that's.
Yeah, so, but, you know, the problem is inventory right now, um, you can't find a property that. Sort of allows for this, especially at a one-story, so that's part of my, that's part of my issue, um, the septic is twelve fifty, the tank is twelve fifty. Um, so what, I think then, what, what I can do is, so it may be then helpful for you all to have. These plans, some of the things that I can come with, come. Square footage of the garage and the actual square footage of the actual addition, um, and then. Um, are there any other questions or any other things that I should follow up on?
Well, so you've got a bedroom, you've got a den, you've got, is the fireplace in the den, or is the fireplace, is there a kitchen that, this is what it looks like, there's R E F, and so it looks like there's a refrigerator?
Yes, so there is a kitchen.
The rooms aren't even labeled, really, the bedroom and den are labeled.
No, again, I mean, what we tried to do is provide some sort of context, um, we could get the architect to draw them up, it was, we were advised not to do that until. Um, you know, we had more, uh, more sort of approval, um, to move forward, but I mean, I could do that, I could get, I could.
We're going to add it backwards, I'm not sure why they told you that.
What's that?
Going that backwards, you don't need full architectural plans, you need a layout with some measurements and what you plan on developing eventually, you don't need. You know, wiring, AC plants and all that kind of stuff at this stage, but you need to have a definite layout as to what you plan on doing.
Okay, so I thought that that's what this was that Norma has, but maybe that's not right, so.
So, so what you're, what I'm seeing is a seventeen-foot kitchen by twelve foot, which is, you know, that's pretty big, uh, you know.
That includes, that also includes a family room, so it's a kitchen and a family room, so.
Then what's, then what's the den?
The den is for, um, a computer, a desk. Um, it's like a little office space, the treadmill will go in there. It's multi-use.
You're, you're given too many options for people to expand this into a larger bedroom count of a house, really, that's, that's my biggest concern here.
Okay. Um.
Especially with the extra bathroom and a half.
Yeah, you're, you're really building a house on addition, another house.
Okay, so it sounds like I gotta lose some of this, so the den may have to go.
Well, and we need to see exactly, yeah, what we're doing, I, again, I, in the same boat as Aziz, I don't have the floor plan that was.
Yeah, okay.
And, and how many garages do you have in your existing house?
Uh, just two.
And so this garage.
Would be a third, would be the third garage.
Would be the third, and it would be, in essence, you pull into your driveway and pull straight into this garage.
Right, right, yep, that's right.
Oh, um, Mr. Cabibbo, I don't think you're ready for a public hearing, I think we need to see this again, it would give a, a chance to the other members to see the floor plan that I have, but. I think you need to rethink it just a little bit, it's very large, okay?
Okay.
You know, I'm not saying it's impossible, but I, but when, one of the things we have to consider is whether, you know, this. Size of an, of a variance is, is really necessary, it's kinda hard to say that this is really necessary.
Okay.
All right, so you might be able to reconfigure some of the space a little bit and shrink that rear variance. So instead of being twenty-two feet away from your neighbor in the back. You know, you get it down to, you, or you get it up to twenty-five, twenty-six feet away, that sort of thing. Um, but, you know, like, there's an open deck in what appears to be like the middle of the floor pan here, and it's, you know, so I didn't, I can't tell what's the existing main house versus. What's your addition, it's really very weird.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to talk about to Norma, because not everyone has the document, but the, um, the connection is, it's. The connection is closer to, see where it says main house. And you see where the.
It says main house, eh, eh, three different places.
Okay. Um.
And that was my confusion with all the measurements, I'm not sure what the measurements are representing.
Right, all right, so, so then, it sounds like my homework is to clear, more clearly define what the space is, what each space is, I can, um, also define better, you know. What this den is, potentially shift some, some, shrink some, some of this down, um, and then also be clearer, I guess, in terms of, uh, the overall size. Cause it doesn't include the garage, doesn't include the garage, I defined the answer to the septic, it's twelve fifty. And then, um, and then we'll go from there, I, there also might be too much stuff on here, like, I don't know if you all need all these measurements, but maybe you do, and if, and if you do, that's fine too.
Yeah, I don't know that we need all of them, so, you know, but that's, um, all right, so we're gonna, in the, in the, between now and next month, you're gonna do some more homework.
Yeah, and, and so Norma, do I need to resubmit like a revised or an edited plan, do I have to then go back to the survey? Do I have to get another survey?
I mean, I'm, I, I think right now, you're, you're, let's, don't worry about the survey, don't make any changes to your survey until we agree on what the floor plan of the unit should look like.
Okay.
All right, so focus on the floor plan of the unit, get rid of anything that's really not necessary, so like, you know, you're drawing out a patio, forget it, I, I don't need you to draw out a patio unless that patio needs a variance. But it shouldn't, because a patio can go fifteen feet from the property line, so, um.
All right, so I'll.
But be, be very clear where the lines of the existing house are. Okay, what's there now, be very, very clear, because I can't make that out. Like I said, three different places, it says main house, there's one place that says existing door.
That's where the house is, that's the entrance, that's the connection to the house.
But I'm not actually seeing that you put a door in, that's what's, unless it's.
Well, it's a doorway, it's supposed to be a doorway, so, it's, or like, like a walkway, it's, um, I get it, I need, we need to clean it up a little bit, it's really not clear.
And, and for nothing, I mean, you know, again, this is, this is your business, but if you're, you know, you're pre, planning thirty-two foot, oh, thirty-two inch openings for your doorways. If this is for parents who wanna age in place, you probably wanna consider more of universal design standards, which is gonna be thirty-six inch doorways.
Yeah.
Because then it allows for mobility issues, you know, years from now, when, when they might need that, um, but yeah, can think about. How do you get people in and out of rooms when they need a little bit of extra assistance, okay?
No, that's good, I would have to open up that doorway a little bit, a little bit more, um, the existing one, which is fine, okay.
It's just something, it's just something to think about, that's all, I, I, I encourage everybody to consider universal design, because we all wanna be able to stay where we are, and, and you never know when somebody has to visit you that's in a wheelchair. That would appreciate that extra, those extra couple of inches, so.
No, and I appreciate the dialogue, honestly, you know, this is the challenge, I mean, you know, my parents are getting older, I, one is aging a little bit better than the other, um, but still. You know, somebody's gotta take care of them, so, anyway.
Right.
All right.
All right, thank you, we'll see you again next month.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay. So that one, we need more info. And then, last but not least, item number six is Appeal four zero two eight, Anthony Smith, now that's a nice, easy name. Two forty-one Lee Town Road, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow an existing eighteen-foot by fourteen-foot or two hundred and fifty-two. Two forty-one Lee Town Road, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow an existing eighteen-foot by fourteen-foot or two hundred and fifty-two square foot shed. To be located in the front yard pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance.
Yes, hi.
Hi, yep, we can.
Great.
And please explain who Matt Rickett is.
That is our zoning.
Oh, Matt is our zoning person. That explains why his email comes up. Thank you. I didn't see him on there before, okay. All right, so Mr. Smith, again, first time we're seeing your application, um, this shed exists?
Yep, I've, I've been here fifteen years and it's, it predated me.
Okay, so what, that's a very important question for us. Did you put the shed up?
No, it's, no, the, the most I've done is put a new roof on it and painted it over the years and, um, done that, but it's, it's, it predated me. I, I found out that it wasn't permitted when we had a, a permit done by, uh, Rick Con- Konser. Yep, sorry. He, uh, he came to take care of a different permit we were doing, mentioned it, and once he mentioned it, I started the process with Jackie to, uh. To, you know, take care of this.
Okay, so can you please explain, do you own, you own both lots?
Yes.
Okay, are you making, please, are you combining these lots into a single lot?
Yes, I already fi- I filed that with, um, Poughkeepsie, uh, last week, once it was mentioned, you know.
Okay, because otherwise we were gonna have an issue with where the pool was, et cetera, so.
Yeah, yeah, she had mentioned that, and, and it's funny because that had been permitted, so I wasn't sure, but I, I'm, I've started the process to join in the lot. So that, I, I don't know how long it takes Poughkeepsie to do that, though.
That's right, the, the way you labeled your survey with the total area for acres, it led me to believe that you were combining them, so.
Yes.
Are there other structures on this property that are not shown on this survey? Something about a gazebo?
Well, I don't have a gazebo. I have, uh, um, I guess you'd call it canopy. It's one of those things that, like, you get at Sam's Club, yeah. I just had to get a metal one to, you know, the fabric ones keep breaking and rotting. So it's got a metal roof, but it's a canopy. It's not, you know, nailed down or anything, you can move it where you want.
Mounted to the ground, it's, it's portable.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, all right, just checking.
Yep.
All right, um, because otherwise, I was gonna say, you just had the survey done, not even two years ago, you should be able to get it updated to show all structures. So that it appears that the, your. This shed that's in the front yard is a hundred and seventy-two feet from the road, which probably means it's not very visible. Tell me about the screening in that area. Is it visible from the roadway from, you know?
No, it's, it's all wooded from there down. I mean, I mean, this time of year, I mean, if you were looking for it, you could probably see it, but with foliage, you wouldn't even know it was there.
And so what color is it?
Uh, same color as the house. It's like a blue, yeah.
Okay, so with the house behind it, you, if you're looking at it the right way, it probably just blends in with the house.
Yeah, I, I don't think you would even, you would even notice it if you, unless it was pointed out to you. And like I said, in, in, outside of this time of year, you, you, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the trees, the, the leaves and everything.
So I guess I just am curious, why are you coming in with this?
Um, well, Rick had said it wasn't, um, that, there was no permit for it.
Got it, okay.
I needed to, yeah, so, so it kind of, you know, I needed the permit, so I need the variance for the permit.
So, so better to clean it up now, okay.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure everything's clean. I, I don't want to have problems later on.
So comments or questions from board members or a motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise.
On favor? Hi, all right, so Mr. Smith, you'd call Jackie tomorrow or the next day and, um, just get your sign. Because you'll need to post one sign on Lee Town Road there.
Okay.
All right, cool, that one, this wasn't an easy one, so.
Let's save, save the easy one for last.
Well, you know, that always helps. Sorry you had to go through what you had to go through, but you, you know, the, it's all the more that you understand why the public hearings tend to run a lot smoother. Because we iron out all the issues in the reviews, so.
I've ne- I've never sat through one of these. It was actually interesting, so.
Well, you learn something new every day. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, good night, everybody. We'll see everybody next month.